Open meeting at 6 o'clock. Start by just the usual announcement that the meeting is being taped by Area 58. Everyone would join in standing for the President of the Echeverria. Gentlemen, remove your hats.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda, do we have any changes to be made from board?
No.
None that I see. Do we have a motion to approve as said?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, so first thing on our agenda is an executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21. To begin at 6 o'clock in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Selectmen will be discussing the following: to discuss complaints against and the possible discipline or dismissal of a public officer or individual pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1. So make a motion that we go into executive session for that purpose, or the second?
Second.
The roll call vote, Mr. Nezarella?
Yes.
Mr. Selig?
Yes.
And I vote yes. This meeting will reconvene in the Great Hall here at the conclusion of the executive session, and the participants for the executive session will be meeting downstairs in the Selectmen's Meeting. So return to the meeting room.
I'll see you guys later.
Can, are you all set?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll come back into our regular session, and I'll make the announcement that we held an executive session relating to the building inspector. The executive session, Mr. Nezarella recused himself, did not participate, didn't even attend the hearing part. At the conclusion of the executive session, it was voted to terminate Mr. Perry as the building inspector effective immediately. All right, going on to our next part of our agenda, I think we're a little bit late on the hearing. Okay, all right. So I need to do this the right way, so let me get you. So Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 28, 2023, at 6:15 PM. It says in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, but it's here in the Great Hall for the attendance, for the purpose to consider opting out of vote by mail for the municipal town election. Hearing will begin at 6:15. I apologize, we're running late, and continue until completion, and will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 54, Section 25B, A1. So if Mrs. Lawless could just give us again a little idea of what we're doing here?
I'm going to open the public hearing.
I think I just did.
Or did you all keep saying?
If I didn't, I meant to open the hearing.
Good evening, this hearing-
Identify yourself really quick, if you don't mind.
Susan Lawless, Town Clerk.
Thank you.
Good evening, this hearing is to decide whether our community would like to opt out of vote by mail for the local election. Typically, these elections are low interest, and given the increase of unfunded mandates from the state, it would be a cost savings for the town to opt out. While I understand that the idea of vote by mail has become popular by many, I do not feel that the town has made the changes necessary to support it. My office is currently a part-time office, and the vote by mail process is very labor-intensive. Many residents did not return their local election ballots that they were sent along with their state ballots for the last election. This board will have to have a hearing such as this every year in order to opt out. So if it is this board's decision not to have vote by mail this year, it isn't to say that it can't happen in future years. Also, and most importantly, I want everyone to know that absentee voting will still be available, as it always has been. You can vote absentee ballot if you meet the following criteria: You'll be away from your city or town on election day. You have a religious belief that prevents you from voting at your polling location on election day. You have a disability that prevents you from voting at your polling location. You are on active military duty. You are a U.S. citizen living outside the U.S. You are requesting an emergency absentee ballot due to hospitalization. You are currently incarcerated for a reason other than a felony conviction. You can apply for an absentee ballot by mail, email, or fax, as long as it has your physical signature on it.
So your, so this meeting, this hearing right now, the open public hearing that we're having right now, is to take comments and make a decision on whether or not to...
Opt out.
Opt out.
Opt out of vote by mail.
Opt out of the mailing voting for this May's elections only.
Correct. State, for all state elections, it will happen.
Okay.
Regardless.
If in fact it's voted to do that this year, we'll have to do it again next year if we want to do it next year and then every year after.
Correct. So if things get on track, and you feel like there's enough staffing, and it's something that you want to do, absolutely. This is a one-time thing.
All right, so this is an open public hearing. Does anyone have any comments for the board to consider? Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, Mr. Corrigan, if you would go over there to the microphone.
We need-
Mr. McCorrigan.
We need you to go over to the mic.
Because otherwise he won't be recorded. And also, would you please introduce yourself so that we have it on the record?
Good evening, my name is Frederick Corrigan. I'm that old man that does all the snow sculptures, so anyway. And causes trouble around town, just add it all in. My question is, why are we looking just to opt this out for this particular year? What is, what is the big expense here? What are we really talking about, in dollars? Or is it time? What are we looking at here? Can I get an answer on that question?
Yeah, sure. If you take a seat, we'll ask Ms. Lawless to answer a question for you.
Do not have a dollar figure on what the cost would be, because we haven't had a situation where we just did it. Because we just had the local election, but it was in conjunction with the state election, and that was all put together. So I really had no way to separate out what expenses would be. Because you're talking about mailing ballots, getting ballots back, unsigned, mailing them back out again. It's more about the support staff and the office. I have also asked the Finance Committee to increase that, increase the hours of the personnel.
The other part of his question was, why are we doing it this year as opposed to any other time?
That's why, because we just had five elections, and I still haven't caught up from my regular day-to-day work from the five that we had. It's a staffing issue.
I think you told us the last time that-
And people-
-the state law recently changed?
Absolutely, for the Votes Act. Yep.
And because of that change in the state laws, why this is coming up?
Now. Does that make sense?
Questions, or?
It makes sense to a point. Makes sense to a point, and I understand staffing. Because I've run businesses in my many years of being on this earth. But also, I have to look at the right to vote for our citizens, and coming from the Halifax Mobile Home Estates, where I have 437 units in that one park. And there are a lot of those people that do not drive. They're too old to drive. I'm not even sure of how they would even get a ballot, okay? Fortunately, I haven't had to go through that process. If they were to request a ballot relative to getting an absentee ballot, and I can't see where we can take 437 people in this small town and say, just because you're old and you don't have a car, or you have a disability, you can't vote. We don't have enough people to handle your paperwork. We may have to look at other ways. I don't care. Do we need to bring in a couple of high school kids who can help with whatever needs to be done in getting mail ballots out? I'm not sure. I'm not sure of the total process, and I'm sure that, that our town clerk is doing a fine job, and is doing the very best she can on limited resources and limited personnel. But the cost of voting for our citizens doesn't have a price tag.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments from anyone else? Okay. Mrs. Lawless, yes?
As stated previously, anybody with a disability or a reason why they cannot be to the polls has the option to absentee ballot, as they have in every election prior to this vote being passed.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I suppose that the next step would be, since I have no other comments?
Can I just?
Go on, go ahead.
Sue, if you could clarify, are you sending ballots out to every registered voter? Okay.
So we will close the hearing, since we don't have any more comments, or close it, yeah, close the hearing. And then the clerk has asked us to vote on whether or not to opt out. So anybody from the board want to make any comments or suggestions for motions?
I think it's tough, because I agree with what gentleman said about not limiting people's ability to vote. I've also seen the town clerk's office trying to handle that, and it's, it's trying to plug holes in the boat. So I can see both sides of the issue. I'm not into limiting voting access. If there's a way we can get creative to get people there, you know? I have a, I have a minivan. I can drive folks there. We can come up with something to get them there. As Sue said as well, if anybody has any sort of disability, that, you know, will get them a ballot as well, or if they're not around that day, that will get them a ballot as well. So there are options, I think, to help those folks, and I think we as a board and a town should look into ways to help them get access to the, to the vote. But I do also know it is a crush on a part-time town clerk to try and pull it off. So I will, I will make a motion to opt out of voting by mail for this coming election.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any, any further discussion? So I'll throw in my two cents also. I think this is, it's gonna have to be an annual event. We don't have to do this every year. If it, if it become, if it's clear in May that there's a problem, we just won't do it again. So I think this is, the town clerk's making a recommendation to us to follow a new change in the law, and I think it's reasonable, given the way she explains it and what Mr. Selig says, that we should, we should do it this way and see how it works. And if it doesn't work, we'll fix it next year. It's not, not forever, which is, which is kind of a lucky thing for us this time. All right, so any other, without any other discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay, so going back to our agenda. We can now go to the minutes and the bills.
There we are.
All right.
There we go. I move to approve the following Selectment Minutes: Regular Session July 12, 2022; Regular Session November 22, 2022; Regular Session February 8, 2023.
Okay.
Move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments: School warrant-
Let's vote on the, let's vote on the minutes first.
All right.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, go ahead.
I move to affirm the approval of warrants and commitments. School warrant number 71 for $472,792.03. Payroll warrant number 72 for $421,776.44. Vendor warrant number 73 for $62,439.74. Withholding warrant number 74 for $140,779.81. Vendor warrant number 75 for $32,566.44. Vendor warrant number 76 for $31,924.80. Vendor warrant number 77 for $31,752.42. Vendor warrant number 78 for $39,928.91. Ambulance commitment from February 6, 2023 to February 12, 2023 for $77,556.52. Ambulance commitment from February 13, 2023 to February 19, 2023 for $38,096.60.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Bills?
I move to affirm payments of the following Selectment Bills:
Those you just went right here.
Yeah. Those ones, right? Then there's the next one.
Exactly.
Paul Proceda for $1,500. Cardian Johnson for $1,809.50. And TEC Plumbing Heating for $843.54.
We just said they were from the borough.
For the pipe bursts in the elementary school.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Warrants?
These are warrants. All right. Move to approve the following warrants. What do we got?
Following Selectment Bills. Selectment Bills.
Who are we talking about?
Okay, go ahead.
No, these ones. Right? Payroll warrant number 79 for $419,751.79. Vendor warrant number 80 for $86,070.17. And withholding warrant number 81 for $137,896.83.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? A little more in here, please?
Next, save the money.
Okay. More bills?
Yeah, oh yeah, more bills.
Oh, nausea, you just spent a lot of money this month.
Making it rain.
I know, right? I move to approve payments of the following Selectment Bills: Selectment expense account, Express Newspaper for $90. Town Hall Electricity, National Grid, $1,374.65. Brooks &amp; Durensis Law for $17,354.29. William August Esquire in $350 Law. That's it.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, that takes care of all of our bills and appointments, so we'll go into discussions. Just in case this crowd is here for the Morris Brothers' part of the agenda. So that, those four things are kind of a standing thing on our agenda until we get them resolved. So we were supposed to have an inspection of the property today, but because of the storm, we weren't able to do that. So we intend to get it done this week, and we will report back to the board. I will, and Mr. Haddad, who are the ones that are going to go with the engineer to take a look and see what's going on there. So if anybody's here for that, that's all we're going to talk about tonight, is that part of the update. So just, I don't want you hanging around all night long thinking we didn't get to it, but that's, that's all that we're going to talk about there. Okay, so going back to the top then, discussions on reappointments, do we have a?
Yeah, so in conversations with Ms. McSherry, annual appointments are coming up in June or July, and we just wanted to have a discussion with the board on how you'd like to handle those. It's been handled differently by different boards in the past, so we just wanted to know the direction the board would like to go in as far as, you know, reappointing individuals, opening it up for, for everybody, or, and how to move forward with that process.
Does anyone on the board have any thoughts about that? I know you guys, well, you did it last year, but I don't think you did it-
Yeah, never. Just, I'll share with you guys, part of the process I found tricky was that I was making decisions for boards where the board members knew a lot more about the subject matter than I did. So whatever process we come up with, I would love to have board input for, for the appointment. I mean, let's take Concom, you know, like they, the people on Concom, that's its own kind of universe, and I try to absorb as much as I can, but I feel like people that have already have a, a knowledge on an area, it would make sense to, to tap those people for them to be part of the appointment process. So that was just kind of my take on it.
Yeah, so in the past, what, it really varied on, you know, what the appointment was. If it's a reappointment of someone, and, you know, my general thought is that if we have volunteer people that are willing to continue on, that I'm all in favor of reappointing them, unless I have a reason not to. And that's only in my career, as a selectman, happened maybe once. Other than that, you know, I, I really appreciate, I think we all appreciate, the efforts that people take to educate themselves and become part of the process. I agree with your thought, John, that if the board itself has any recommendation on its member, that we should certainly take that into account.
Absolutely.
So I think, I don't know if that's enough guidance, but it seems to me that we have a, you know, we'll have a list, I know what'll happen, and we're going to end up with a list of appointments, and they'll be, in the most part, reappointments. If it's somebody new, me personally, I like to meet them, you know? If it's a new person, not, maybe not transferring from one place to another, that's different. But if it's somebody new to one of our positions, I like to have them come in, I like to meet them, just to say hello, I like to get the town to meet them on the camera, just so that we start off with the idea that, you know, this is public business, and the public should know who their appointed officials are. But other than that, you know, we're going to have Finance Committee people coming up, we're going to have, all of those committees are going to have reappointments. And unless, unless the board itself gives me a different idea, or, you know, I have some reason not to reappoint somebody, I will reappoint them, generally speaking.
So on that, John, if, let's say attendance, let's say we have a member that, that isn't coming to meetings, isn't, maybe they get into a committee or something, and they realized it's more than they thought, is that something that we should consider or work into our reappointment process?
I would, I mean, if it's an issue, right? And we should know that, you know? If it's somebody that's not taking their office seriously, and we're the appointing authority, then I think we should do that, yeah. Again, I mean, I'm really, I want to be careful about stuff like that. The last thing I want to do is discourage people from participating, and I also want to, you know, do as much as I can to support the people that do participate, you know? But I agree with you. I mean, if you're not showing up at a meeting, well, that's a problem, right? I agree with that. It was same as if you're disruptive, or if you're, you know, if you're going off on your own, when you're not following what the, the board is, itself is doing, all those kind of things. I mean, ultimately, if we make the appointment, we're responsible for it.
Sure.
So is that enough guidance?
Yeah, so what we'll do is, we'll, as we compile a list of reappointments, we'll reach out to the boards and committees, ask them for attendance records, and to just, if there's a recommendation of the individual board on that, on the, on the reappointment.
That'd be great.
And then when we provide you the list of reappointments, any information that's been given to us, we'll provide to you.
Awesome.
Next thing is the CPTC Training for Regulatory Boards, can just have a question?
So this has been on the agenda, we're trying to keep it on the agenda. This is really specialized training that we're looking at for our boards and committees beyond open meeting law and kind of running, running a meeting. This is more specialized, you know, 40B training for our zoning board of appeals, and, you know, planning specific, because it's technical. So we have reached out to UMass Boston Collins Center for them to provide us with a proposal. We have not received the proposal back yet, but just again, wanted to keep it on the agenda, so we are making progress.
Excellent. Personally, I think this is a, should be a high priority of our board. We just got done talking about appointments and how it's our responsibility to make those appointments, and it's ultimately our responsibility to make sure their appointments are correct. But I think the training is, is, is very critical to that at this point. In days gone by, we'd have a lot of institutional knowledge, might be on the zoning board forever, and would know all the things and else. The law's changed now so fast and have gotten so complicated, even this open meeting law has gotten more complicated in the last couple of years, and I think that it's, it's really, should be a priority of ours. Again, going along with what you were talking about, appointments before, so.
Sure.
I'm really happy about that. I'd like to see this get that implemented as soon as possible.
We are working on it.
All right. Approve, sign for TATA and Howard County, approve and sign, I'm sorry.
So this is, we've been working on some water treatment plant upgrades at Richmond Park and the Y Water Treatment Plants. We are looking to implement and go out to bidding the scope. Since the original project came in, has expanded, our anticipated timeline has expanded, so we've required more services from the engineer that's assisting us, and we're going to require some more assistance from them in order to implement the project. So this is just an amendment to the original contract with the engineering firm. The Water Commissioner's already approved it, it just needs to be approved and signed by the board of selectmen.
Okay. Discussion for the board?
Can I get it fixed?
What were we calling it now?
It's, it's just an amendment number two to the agreement for engineering services.
Okay. I'll move that we approve the amendment number two.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That first page, the second page.
Okay. Procedure for received talent bank forms?
So this is, in conversations with Ms. McSherry, when we get talent bank forms, we didn't necessarily have a given procedure on how the board would like to handle those. So Ms. McSherry was kind enough to draft a policy, and I reviewed it, and I think it's, it would be our joint recommendation to adopt this. It really just lays out a process for not only us in the office, but also for the board. And I'll run through it briefly, but when a new form is received, we would distribute it to the, all the members on the specific board committee slash commission. And then if the, if there's an opening and the board committee commission wants to discuss their offer to the volunteer, they should contact the applicant, and then they, they could make accommodations to talk to the applicant, think if they would be a good fit, and the, the individual board committee would then make a recommendation to you guys. And ultimately, you guys would have the final say. And then it just says it should be kept on file for one year, and to let them know if they can't, if their assistance can't be used at this time. So it doesn't, it just adds, like Jonathan was saying, the, the feedback really of the individual board committee, and it puts it into a written policy that we keep it for a year, because there isn't a set time right now, and we found, you know, it may be, something opens up a few years later, and we're contacting people that are no longer interested.
Okay, any discussion?
Or live in town, or?
Yeah, a good number of reasons.
Sure. No, I'd like to thank Tim. Nice work, Tim.
Very nice job.
This is the procedure that we used to have years ago, and somehow it got away from it, so I think it's perfect. So I will move that we may adopt that procedure as just described by the Executive Minister, Town Minister, I'm sorry.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. CDBG application, Mobile Home Estates?
This is a, it's been on the agenda a number of times regarding the CDBG application for the Mobile Home Estates to do some tree removal service. I have been working with the state to draft an application. Unfortunately, they're having issues with their online portal, so I don't have a physical application to give you. But ultimately, my recommendation would be, if you're supportive of this, you would vote to allow the town administrator to submit it, and then you would reaffirm the vote. If we are awarded, then you would vote to accept it. So there's still, it's multi-process, but ultimately, it would just, it's for a sum of a little over $700, or $750,000 to the Mobile Home Park to remove trees that have been invasive there. We would look to add potentially some administrative fees, so we could try to recoup some of our costs. We would add the Mobile Home Park as a sub-grantee, so they would oversee it. Ultimately, at the end of the day, it is still our project, and we do have to oversee it, because even as a sub-grantee, if there was, it's our responsibility. So the funding at the end of the day is our responsibility. So just for the board to consider and decide on if you'd like to move forward with that or not.
No, I, I'd try to like to make this happen, if at all possible. You know, I think- You know, I think, as they're one of our biggest tax contributors to town, I would, I know it's extra work for our new town administrator, but I think in the essence of trying to help our residents, I think we should pursue it.
Yeah.
So grant from the state, it really, we're just sort of just passing along, so it's, it's a good. What is the motion you want us to?
You would just allow me to submit the grant on behalf of the town for the mobile home park.
All right. So I'll make that motion that we authorize the town administrator to submit the grant for the mobile home park.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Okay, special town meeting.
This is just opening the special town meeting warrant, so articles can start to be developed for this.
Okay, as of tonight?
As of tonight, yes.
And it'll close?
At likely our second meeting in March.
Okay. So I'll make that motion that we open the special town meeting tonight and close the second meeting in March, the second?
The second meeting that we have in March.
Second meeting in March.
And just, Cody, if you could just explain the process maybe to the folks of what opening the warrant is, if they understand?
It's really, it's, some communities don't necessarily even do it. It's, it's just us formally opening the warrant and allowing articles to be submitted and placed on the, the annual town meeting warrant.
Well, this is the special.
Yeah, so this would be the, the special town meeting warrant, sorry.
Typically have a, an annual town meeting warrant, warrant being the agenda, essentially, that we go by, and that warrant has already been opened, we open that in January, and it closes the end of March, like this one does. And almost always, in order to handle things that need to be accomplished before the end of the fiscal year, which is not until July 1st, we will have a special town meeting inside the annual town meeting, and that's what this has set the agenda for that. Doesn't have to have anything on it, but we'll open it and see what happens.
Sure. So did you make a motion, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
It's the beard.
Affirm, ambulance affiliation agreement.
So this is just, this has to be done every few years. This is the recommendation of the fire chief. It's an agreement with Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital in Plymouth, basically just allowing us to transport patients there. So they, it's an affiliation agreement that we have to sign with all the hospitals that we basically bring patients to.
Okay. Is there cost involved, or just a?
No, it's just, it's pretty standard, the provisions of, you know, having certified people bring in patients, you can't just have someone, you know, drop off. There's, there's a number of criteria, the fire chief has reviewed it, it's in its standard language.
Okay, so any discussion?
Just curious, Cody, is this part of the Brockton Hospital situation?
I believe it is, but I'm not 100% sure. I think they do this every couple of years anyways.
Okay.
But I think it, that it may have been exacerbated by the Brockton Hospital situation.
Okay.
Okay, a motion and a second?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Ambulance abatements from January 2023? Did we already do this?
We already did.
I'll, I'll save nausea from having to say it.
What? Did we already do abatements?
We already did. So we have a, I would move that we abate the ambulance costs from January 2023 in the amount of $86,308.80.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Live entertainment request Halifax Pride. So we have a request from Halifax Pride, just multiple copies of the same thing here right here, for, they, we've already authorized them to use the town green on June 17th. They are now looking for a live entertainment permit, type of entertainment, SLRHS Silverlake Regional High School students, community members, family friendly, friendly drag performance and a DJ. The request has already gone and been approved and okayed by the fire chief, police chief and board of health. And the hours, I think I saw here somewhere, are 11 a.m., 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. Okay, you have a motion or any discussion?
I'll make a motion to accept the live entertainment permit application for the Halifax Pride event dated June 17th, 2023. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Pam, I just have a license. Can I have that for you to sign?
This one?
Uh, no, she's not getting that. I can do that.
I was going to say, we don't have to sign that.
Yeah, she's right there. Jonathan has it.
Oh, okay. Okay, so this is, oh, live entertainment. Okay, next thing on the agenda would be use of town green by the Boy Scouts. Town greens give a lot of use to this.
That's it.
That's good. So we have a request from the committee chair, Halifax Boy Scout Troop 39. Boy Scout Troop 39 would like to use the town green on Saturday, April 22nd, 2023, from 8 a.m. to 1 p.m. for a bottle food drive fundraising event. So do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to let the Boy Scout Troop 39 use the town green on Saturday, April 22nd, 2023, from 8 to 1 for a bottle food drive fundraising event.
Okay, do you have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Thank you, Boy Scouts.
Yes. Let me get my bottles. Okay, Holmes Public Library requested to declare one Dell Optiplex 31, 3010 surplus. I have no idea what that is.
Yeah, it's just basically a desktop computer. The computers were replaced with newer computers that have an updated operating system, so they've become obsolete. So Gene has determined that for so long it needed, so policy, it would be for the board to vote this as surplus equipment.
Okay, and then it becomes auctioned off or just sold away, or?
Yeah, we have a lot of equipment kept in a place, and we'll eventually probably do like a gov auction to see if we can get anything for it.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Any, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Next vacation carryover from the building maintenance department, Mr. Schindler.
So there's a?
I don't know what the policy is for this, so if you do, you know?
It is allowable, it's just, they've typically brought it before the board for, for approval. It is 29.28 hours, so, you know, you're not? Yeah, it's less than a week.
Okay, and is there any limit on it, or is this through the Waging Personal Bylaw?
I believe this is a union employee.
Oh, you're right, yeah, okay. Okay, any discussion, any motions?
No, I just know, I know that department is running shorthanded, so I'm sure that affected their ability to take vacation, so I'd be all for it.
Well, move, would you make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve 29.28 hours of vacation time over the coming fiscal year for Tom Schindler.
Second.
We have a second?
Yes, and I read that too, yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Cemetery deeds.
Spell check is funny.
People are dying to give a nap. So we had to do that.
I was waiting for it.
So we don't need to do anything other than sign these, so. While I'm doing that, approval for OPM request for qualifications for council on aging?
Yes, so we developed a team here in town to actively discuss the council on aging project, which had some funding approved at last town meeting. We've gone through, there's been some advancements in engineering. When I was brought into the project, it was brought to my attention of where we were, and we were, we needed to come into compliance with procurement law, Massachusetts procurement law, which requires for any, any project that is expected to cost over, a building project expected to cost over $1.5 million, we have to bring in what's called an owner's project manager. So it's really exactly what it sounds like, it's a project manager that would serve on our behalf, but they oversee really the whole process, so it would be start to finish in the design and architecture phase, and then they'd oversee construction services, wrap up, you know, payments. So this is, the procurement law requires that we do this procurement, which is a request for qualifications. So this is the procurement that I put together for the town. It has a number of different criteria that other communities have utilized, and it really sets us in a trajectory forward to get this project moving, get some plans finalized, and then hopefully move into the construction phase.
This is a request for proposals, is that what?
Request for qualifications.
Okay, request for qualifications. Okay, Dan, can you just, because I'm sure there's confusion about where this project stands, can you give us like, as much I know you were involved, can you give us a little bit of an outline on where it stands and how, what the timeframe is for what we can expect this request that we're going to sign now, how that will affect it?
Sure, so in the internal discussions that have been had, I believe it was, a decision was made most efficiently, the best option would be to move forward with some sort of addition and remodel of potentially the Halifax Museum, and locate the new council on aging at that location. The engineer that has been on board, working with the team, has developed some plans and a really preliminary cost estimate, but like I said, we really, state procurement law requires that we have this individual in place prior to moving any more forward, because they're really our eyes and ears. So things will be finalized, you know, as we progress, but this is, the next step is getting this individual on board and then nailing down actual design plans, which would then allow us to go out to bid for the actual construction. So we're certainly further than we've been in the past, but we do still have, you know, some, some headway to make.
Just, so we have some idea on the timeframe of?
So this will, if you approve this, this will be issued, let's see, I put this as being issued next Tuesday, and then it would be due April 25th. Proposals, we would actively, we'd put together an internal team to review the proposals, and make, we may conduct interviews with these project managers, and then we would recommend a project manager to the board of selectmen for your approval, and basically to adopt a contract with them, and then they would basically assist us moving forward. The next step would be to get an architect, designer, to finish this process.
Okay, having worked on other committees with buildings and so on, I'm surprised that we haven't done this in the past on this project. It seems like something needed to be done, so I'm 100% in favor of it. Board have any suggestions before we take comments? Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'll repeat, I didn't realize this was amplified, to tell you the truth, I thought it was just recorded. So having been on other committees doing building projects in the district here, I'm surprised we haven't done this before, so I don't know why it's taken us this long to do it. Thankfully, Cody is here and straightening us out, so I'm 100% in favor of it. It's a, basically, it's the owner's eyes and ears, so.
Yeah, no, I'm all for it as well, it makes, it seems to make sense to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Use it here, Colin.
Mr. Andrews, go ahead.
Sure, Gordon Andrews, 244 Elm Street. So previously, the project was presented at $1.1 million, so that's the number we were looking at last year, so you didn't need an owner's project manager at that point in time.
I didn't?
You didn't need an owner's project manager at the cost that we were looking at last year.
Okay.
So that's why we didn't move forward with that. Just wondering, what's the, where's the money going to come from for this person? Because you're going to have to pay him before the project moves forward, and we didn't appropriate money at town meeting for that purpose.
Okay, we'll try and find out.
Yeah, we, we don't have a contract in place yet, but we have various options that we're looking at on how to fund this. We did receive some earmark funding from the state as part of the economic development bill. There's various options, and we'll have an option before the board, but it's, you don't pay the person in full prior to, you know, we have them on board. We would, it would be a services, so as they administered services to us, we would, you know, pay them. The contract would have a, you know, not to exceed amount ultimately, but it wouldn't be something that would be due upfront. So they would, if we're in the design phase, they'd assist us through the design phase for a fee, and then when we went back to town meeting, if we need additional funding, we would include that at that time for the, the funding for the project manager, for the construction services.
Okay, well, Ms. Reagan, go ahead.
Could I just ask one follow-up question? So the typical owner's project management contract is a 10% contract, right? And the estimate right now is 3.6 million, thereabouts?
Yeah.
So it's going to cost $360,000 for this? Okay.
Mrs. Reagan?
Hi, Darlene Reagan, the council on aging director. Two questions. One question, of course, is, you know, have, do we have someone in mind, and will the funds from the state be utilized, all the funds, the $150,000?
I think we had discussed this, Darlene.
I wasn't sure.
We, we haven't determined the exact funding, we have options, so, you know, before we present a, we're very early in this process, so we're not at a point where we identify exactly, because we don't even know what the cost would be. That's part of this procurement is for us to get a cost from a project manager.
So we're thinking about the 10% of the?
10% is an estimate that they typically tell you to utilize for project managers, for public works, public projects, but we, that's part of this process, we get a fee from them.
Now, with this, and with this project that's been going on for some time, is there a specific time limit in which we are to hire this OPM? So in other words, was it 80 days or from the date that we started talking about the contract, or, you know, possibilities of the 3.6 that was coming out as a figure at one point?
I mean, I can't discuss previous conversations because I wasn't involved, I can tell you, procurement law requires that an owner and project manager for any project over $1.5 million is brought on during the design phase of the project.
So what I'm trying to say is that we've already spent a lot of money to design and go forward with the senior center that we all need, we do need that in town, and for the respect of the seniors in this town, for the respect of the people with disabilities, we need that. So we owe it to the town.
Yeah, we agree with you, Darlene.
We already know that.
That's why we're here with this.
However, I just don't want to spend, we've already spent a lot of money since 2011, but I just want to say that if we spend the money to hire this OPM, will we, what will we gain from it? I mean, are we going to just spend more money and it's going to go to?
Well, we would be in compliance with procurement law that would allow us to move forward. So if we move forward at this point, we are in violation of state procurement law, which is, we don't want to be in violation of state procurement law. So it's ultimately something that we have to do if we want to move forward with this project. And this is, it's a good thing, we want somebody like this, they're, they're certified through the state, they have to be certified as an owner's project manager. Typically, they're an engineer, they have to have several references, they work with DCAM, they're, they're, you're getting high-quality people that are our eyes and ears, because I'm not an engineer, you're not an engineer.
Right, absolutely.
And they make sure that, you know, we're getting the best design that's suitable for us, so really, they're the middleman between us and the designer to make sure that the designer is taking into all of our considerations, but they also typically have experience with other similar projects, so they can look for areas where there's efficiencies or areas where we can try to cut costs, get the most out of the project. And then when it gets to construction, they're typically there almost daily to making sure, making sure that the project is being followed to plan. If anything comes up, they're, they're the ones to say to the contractor, it needs to be redone, or to provide solutions. So, you know, that's ultimately what they do from a high level, but we don't, we don't really have a choice. If we want to move forward with this project, we have to have an owner's project manager.
I agree with that, and I'm glad we are, and I appreciate that. One more question, I actually lied, I had three questions. So the other one, I just wanted to know that, did we hire an OPM for the school project? And I guess what happened, what I hear, because the seniors talk, is that there was an issue with that. I, I just wondered, I hope we don't get into that.
Which school project?
I don't know, they taught, they mentioned the fact that there was an issue, I don't know.
So we shouldn't gossip necessarily, or talk about hearsay?
Maybe it is gossip.
Let me, let me answer that question. So I was the chairman of the building committee when we- So I was the chairman of the building committee when we rebuilt Silver Lake High School, the whole complex, and we used individuals like this as owner's representative. It is, it's helpful in the design phase just to have a second set of eyes because again, you and I can look at a blueprints and not understand the ins and outs of it. So we have a second set of eyes. It is invaluable when you're dealing with the construction part. Not want to disparage any contractors, but somebody has to keep an eye on them and that's what these folks do well. And it's to our benefit to make sure that when we say, you know, we're getting a certain kind of cement or we're getting a certain type of screws, that's how detailed sometimes these things get, that they make sure that it's done.
So basically, you know, respectful of the OPM's decisions and so on. And then what if there is mistakes later? I don't know.
If there's what?
I'm just wondering. It's just a question.
Nothing's perfect. I mean, you're always going to have some issues, that's anticipated. Whenever you have any sort of project, you put in a contingency budget. You know, things are going to come up. But, and also you go through this procurement because you, we look for qualifications. We have a standard and then they basically sell themselves to us and we find, we think is going to be the best option. So you talk to other municipalities where they've done similar projects and you get there an idea of their reputation. So you choose someone who, you know, who we feel is going to be the best fit for the town. Nobody's going to be perfect. Sometimes things will be missed, but you, you go through this process to hire the most qualified and the best candidate for the town. So hopefully there are no mistakes or if they are, they're very minimal.
Well, I respect that.
This will be a public discussion. I mean, we'll have public interviews of these folks. So, you know, if you want to come and watch and say, well, you know, we understand this, that, the other thing. There's no secret here. It's all, it's all going to be out open.
Yeah, and it's a great, I mean, it's deserving of the community and we need it. And, you know, we just want to be positive about everything going forward because we waited too long. So thank you so much, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any other comments for us, questions? Okay, Ford, any questions, comments?
No.
You want to make a motion to?
Just approve the request for qualifications.
There you go. Do you have that motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the request for qualifications for an OPM for the Council on Aging project.
All right, do you have a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, okay. Updates on the following. And again, these are, just so, just so we're all clear, I asked that these be on the agenda every meeting for the purpose of not letting this stuff just go by the boards. I want to make sure that these are issues that we address and that we get them resolved at some point in time. Doesn't mean that every time we have them on the agenda, we're going to talk about them other than to say that they're here, so.
Sure.
On the solar at Hemlock Street?
Yeah, so this was something you had had Jerry in-
Yes.
Yes, in previously to discuss this. I met with him recently and we reviewed the RFP that he had put together. He did a very nice job, so we're very thankful for him for doing that. Had some small edits and then we put together a proposed timeline. So ultimately, as previously stated, there'll be an article in the upcoming town meeting that would allow us to lease the land for more than five years, which is a requirement. If that gets approved, then I'll work with Jerry and we will get this RFP issued after town meeting and then proposal would come in and we'd look to enter into a contract, you know, hopefully sometime in the fall with a solar vendor. So this, this is a positive. It's really only beneficial, there's no cost to the town, but it's just an update that we reviewed the RFP and we have a plan to move forward after town meeting.
Just, I'm excited for the plan because as part of my duties here, I sign our bills for our electric and any help we can get as a town for our electric, I'm all for right now because the numbers are crazy.
I've done my own little bit of research on it and I'm 100% in favor of it. I think it's a great idea and I can't wait till we get it going, so that's good news.
Excited.
Okay, MBTA action plan?
Yes, so we've discussed this at many meetings. Most recently, the board voted that we submit a plan, an action plan, which really just told the state that we would look into investigating the zoning. On February 17th, I received a letter from the state under secretary of the Department of Housing, Community Development, Jennifer Maddox notifying us that they have accepted our action plan and that we are in interim compliance through December 31st of 2024. So that is good news and now the work starts. I did have a conversation with Old Colony Planning Council regarding technical assistance and they're going to provide more information, but it looks like they should be able to provide us with technical assistance to investigate this going forward.
So shouldn't we have a meeting with the zoning bylaw committee?
We will, we're not there yet. I want to have a productive meeting, so I'm hoping we can get the technical assistance soon.
Okay.
And then once we have that, we'll schedule a meeting with the zoning bylaw review committee.
Okay. Questions?
Just a quick one, Cody, on the, on the training, on the training for our committees.
Wait a minute, you skipped over, so are you, we're done with the action?
Well, no, it ties into the action plan a little bit. Are some of that training going to be dealing with any sort of the 3A requirements? Is that part of that package we're looking at or is it strictly?
Not, not specifically.
Okay.
Just because the 3A requirements are really, before any, no projects would be coming to us at this point for this step of zoning.
Gotcha.
The town would have to adopt that zoning first and that's really, we're at the stage of investigating. So there really isn't procedures necessarily for 3A at this point.
Okay.
It may turn into that in the future, but not at this point.
Okay.
Any other discussions on the MBTA?
No.
Morse Brothers, I can make the report. We were supposed to go today to take a look with the engineers. The weather just prevented it. We're going to go hopefully sometime this week to get that done and have a more full report at that time. Sure. Yep, go there.
And they make your, you got to say your name.
That's the way the world.
And where you live.
Hi, Don McNeil, 1113th Ave. I'm just wondering, Morse Brothers, at the first meeting when you gave them the cease and desist order, they stated that in March, they fully intend to start hauling out again? Are we going to wait till they do that? We come back in and complain or do you guys say something to them?
We're trying to, we're trying, we're trying to address that. I think, I think you know, everyone knows, there is a disagreement with Morse Brothers about whatever authorization they might have to do whatever they're trying to do. And what we're trying to do is get our, get that in hand so we can have that discussion with them. We would have had it done today and the only reason it was this late was the, our engineer who has already worked on that project and we wanted to come back and so he has an idea of what has already happened and he was involved in that earth removal permit last year. He just was unavailable. So it's been, it's been to try to tie it all together. We're working on it as fast as we can.
I just asked you to remember that the town bylaws, they supersede any state laws that Morse Brothers are quoting we're hauling it out by. You have to adhere by the state, but anything that the town enacts, that has to be the law. And I'm imploring you guys as a board to act in good faith for all the people that elected you.
That's what we're going to do.
Okay.
We guarantee you that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other discussions on Morse Brothers? Going now to training for boards and commissions. And just to kind of follow up with what you were saying, again, I think this is, we talked about this, what Cody mentioned at the very beginning, training for regulatory boards. This is the same kind of thing. It's the same kind of thing, that we want to make sure that we provide our appointees with as much information and education as possible so we can make good decisions. But I don't think there's anything changed on yet.
No, not, not in particular. We're, we're working with the Attorney General's Office to implement some open meeting law training. I've sent them a few dates. I'm hoping that they can accommodate for, we're going to do, I'd like to do two, two trainings specific to Halifax where one of them would be for all of our internal staff and then we'd open up another one, maybe in an evening, for all of our board and committee members to attend. They, they offer training regularly, but it's not necessarily specific to Halifax, so we're working together with the Attorney General's Office to get a few dates set in stone. And that's, that's really the only update on that.
Okay, that concludes our agenda except for a couple of executive sessions. So let me just make this notation. So we're going to move to enter into executive session pursuant to general laws, chapter 30A, section 2. And it says in the great hall, we'll probably move to the downstairs room and not, and we will not be returning to open session. In the executive session, the selectmen will be discussing the following. Consider the strategy with respect to litigation in Gordon Andrews versus Halifax ZBA et al. Appeals Court number 2020P1003. Gordon Andrews versus Halifax ZBA et al. Land Court number 20MISC000372. And Gordon Andrews versus Halifax ZBA et al. Superior Court number 2083CV000256. The chairman declares that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body. We will also engage in contract negotiation strategy meeting relating to firefighters, highway, mixed unit, patrol officers, sergeants and the wage and personnel. We will also have a discussion, we'll be discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining in an, I'm sorry. Discussing the strategy with respect to collective bargaining in an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. I, as the chairman, declare. And finally, the fire chief contract to discuss, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We won't have anybody with us in the meeting other than the board, town administrator and our-
And counsel from KP Law.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Counsel from KP Law. Oh, she's there, okay. Okay, thank you. All right, so that's my motion. Do we have a second?
You have a second, we're going to be here a long time.
Yeah, so let me take a roll call, vote. I have a question.
Question, yeah, sorry. The Zero Island, is it Zero Island we're going to talk about here?
Zero Island?
For, what we told you was tonight.
That was the conservation commission meeting and they did post a cancellation. Unfortunately, they didn't have a quorum of members due to illness. This is the selectmen meeting.
Sorry, guys.
Sorry. Well, hopefully entertain you anyway.
Oh, no way. Sorry, dude.
Okay, so we'll call vote on executive session. Mr. Nezrela?
Yes.
Mr. Seeland?